Today was deed notice day, so I sent out the those top twenty twenty liens. They both received whole deed notices. And the Hannans have four lien holders, so they received notices to the deed. Which is gonna be in June, end of June. Saint Mary's Bank called me last week about Hannans. And said she has told them that she's making regular payments and that she has got a payment arrangement with the town. And I said that's not true and she's not making payments. So they're gonna go back to drawing board, I guess. I don't know if they're receiving us over the next few days, it shows her.
Yeah, my whole conversation with her was on, I look back, it was March twenty ninth. I had a whole conversation with her, so.
And she.
She made one payment after that and that was it. So.
The actual outstanding really isn't that bad, but the ones that are in trouble, well.
So.
And we're gonna, at least, do I say we're gonna be signing the tax form tonight?
Tax form tonight, yeah. So. Uh, Wednesday I'm going to a conference for town clerks in Annchester, spring workshop. And we're closed on Memorial Day. I think that's it.
Alright, do you have any questions for someone?
Nothing, okay.
You're.
Thanks Jim, thank you.
Uh, like the market.
At the top, uh, we're right on par from last year, a hundred fourteen emergency calls here to date. Sixty-one inspections and trainings. Um, recently, actually today, daycare inspection, proposed daycare at eleven Oxbow Farm Road. The, um, is it church here or a bunch of facility, so. Uh, we're trying to work with them so they can open a daycare in the fall. The state was there with me today conducting that. Monthly growth at our elementary school continued. Uh, I had a, um, it's all dated building, once again, I went there pre-plan. Uh, what we drove is a, um, if there's an incident there. And currently we do not have access to the place, so I'm working with them to put an Oxbow on the place. So I'm coming up with a plan and I'll be sharing in my offices in my next quarter, the offices, me. Updated contacts now, nothing to report on membership.
Where, excuse me, where's the, where's the facility?
Right here, right next to the school.
Oh, okay, yeah.
Uh, Pancake Breakfast was a success, uh, uh, I, I can't take credit for that, Lieutenant Hoffman, that was his baby, uh, and his suggestion. And he, he assembled everything and, and did it. And the benefit was for the Canterbury Volunteer Firefighter Association. And we were able to raise over a thousand dollars for that. And that association is governed by a board, elected board of directors. And the money is spent on, uh, on, you know, flowers for deceased loved one or a plaque, somebody who's retiring or whatever, that's what that pool of funds is, is for. So it's not just a, a, a pool of money that, that, you know, there is a set of trunks and balances for money in and money out of money. I have a deputy warrant application pending that you're in your packet to sign tonight. Um, any questions on that, be happy to answer. We have a big neutral aid drill tonight in Loudoun, we're going out to, um, I forget the name of the place. Um, but one of their larger higher hazard facilities, assuming it was on fire. Uh, it'll be dispatched at six o'clock, so we have two trainings tonight, we've got a crew going over Loudoun and we've got a crew in EMS training tonight, so. Uh, a little busy night in town. I'm working with, um, EverSource, they put on a gate on Interborough Road, uh, where the power lines are. And that, when we got fires in the past down there, uh, Bartwood vampires, uh, that's our access. Right now we have no access to it, so I'm working with them to put an Oxbow on there so we can open the gate, we need to.
This is on the, the power lines or?
Yeah, the power lines, Interborough, yeah, yeah. Uh, as you know, the Belmont Fire Chief recently retired, I had a close, I had a decent work, working relationship with him. And, um, whoever's chosen next, um, I'll keep on my air to the rail and, uh, we'll do the same thing, because we rely on them and they rely on us, so. Alright, the engine purchase, uh, getting rid of this selective vendor. Because we're probably, we're gonna beat the five percent price increase in June on one of the vendors. Time frame's approximately thirty months from the time of contract to the time of delivery. And there's two bids we're considering, uh, they both, uh, the actually, uh, bid letters are, are attached, copies of them. Uh, NRC one, uh, eight hundred thousand dollars. And Rosenbauer, seven ninety-seven, two ninety-nine. There's unique, there's unique, um, items on both of them that I narrowed down to pretty simple blowless and. Um, it's more, it's probably a discussion I'm gonna have with Ken early next week. And if I can get with Scott and I say kind of Scott, because they, they, they work, you know. What I'm, what I'm getting it down to now is the user and firefighter, things that are a little bit different in each one. And I just want second opinion, that's it. So, uh, I'm trying to meet up with them the next, a week or so and then I'll make a decision. So what I'm looking for is, um, and I'm not quite sure, you know, we wanna beat that price increase also. But as soon as we pick a vendor in a very closing price, uh, I'll be setting up a contract signing, which we're committed to purchasing and putting down the three sixty that we have in the cap reserve. So I'll look for authorization from the board, uh, to sign into an agreement with one of these companies.
Okay, you want, you want my email?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, that'll be after a follow-up with, with, with Ken and hopefully I can get purchase copy, you know, worth full time, but you don't need a motion, thank you.
No, no.
Okay.
No, that's fine.
Okay, thank you. And I'll keep you updated, uh, when that contract is signed, it'll be right around by, right around the end of the month. Yeah. And that's all I have. Any questions?
Have fun tonight.
What's that?
Say have fun tonight.
Yeah, thank you, thank you, yeah. Good visiting, okay, thank you.
She's just about Memorial Day.
Okay.
We've talked about it before.
Yeah, okay, great, thank you. You gotta read the mind and get this stuff here.
Reggie? Yep.
You wanna go first, John?
Go ahead, you're.
Alright. She, she's enjoying, she's just enjoying.
I find things out.
Well, that's what I do. So I've got my Memorial Day hat on today.
Thank you.
Um, I am a Spartan hat, but also daughter. There we go. Um, so for Memorial Day, um, I've got my daughter hat on today because I am helping Dad facilitate Memorial Day with the help of Mark Stevens. So basically, I'm doing all the legwork leading up to the ceremony and then, uh, Mark Stevens is gonna handle the ceremony. So, um, this has, this is just a confirmation of what I've asked police fire, um, uh, to do in terms of participation. But also if the Board of Selectmen would like to march, um, that is customary. So, um, here are all the details on that, the parade will start at nine forty-five, I've talked to the school about it. Um, and I would love to use the town hall if it is raining that day. And I checked with Mary and it's available. Um, so that is a copy and also, um, an invitation to participate. Uh, it's always a lovely event, um, and a necessary event. And for my library hat, of course you'll hear enough from me next Monday, if you're still able to come.
Yeah.
Um, what I think we'll do on that evening is we'll have our regular business meeting to start at six o'clock. And then if you could come at six thirty, for those interested, uh, come to six thirty. And I'll have a little presentation about trustees, funding board trustees, R C eleven, and how libraries, uh, are funded.
So what's that date again?
That is a week from today, May twenty-second.
Twenty-sixth.
At six thirty.
I think I've early gotten in my calendar, but I'll bet you'll be, uh.
And I just, normally is six, but if I could get through my consent agenda, I am, you're welcome to participate in that, but it's really boring.
I won't be marching, as you can see.
I see that.
Need some wheels on that.
Well, I won't even be here.
And perhaps it's inappropriate to, uh, commend you on your hair, because you look great.
Well, I just had guns, they, wait till I mess with it, it won't look good. Like weed. So, and stepping up and doing it, I'm looking at the family's, selling bedrooms, so.
I know you do.
They, they appreciate it.
And my dad did it for forty-four years. So it's time for him. And he will be our keynote speaker.
Okay, oh, he will be, okay, good.
Yeah.
Okay.
Question about it, fly pole will not be in, in time.
Yeah.
Will somebody have a flag there, do you think?
I have asked the fire department to have their color guard, which, um, and chief said that that probably couldn't happen.
Okay.
Um, and I'm just gonna lay the memorial wreath in front of the monument.
Yeah, usually goes in front of the monument, but I just, the flag, I, I know the pole isn't gonna be in there by then.
Yeah, I didn't think it would be.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure there was a flag down there.
Yeah, there won't be, thank you. And I'm not sure how I will, uh, handle taps, but probably I'll just say a plain of taps.
Yeah.
I gotta figure that, just.
I had the color guard up on Bob Hoff's service the other day and they got one of those little recorders right in the device.
I know, and you gave it away that it was a recording device and.
But she told me, I looked, I could see the horn and it's like.
And she was breathing, like appropriately to the taps. Lovely.
What will they think of this?
What will?
It was perfect, came out just like.
Saint Mary. Any questions for library and or Memorial Day?
Let's, let's hope for a nice day.
I hope so too, hope so too, but thank you all.
Thank you.
John.
Stunt you, you know.
No wonder, hurry, gotta do it. Keep it quick. Well, the long time has finally said goodbye to me, I can't use it anymore.
No.
It's gonna knock and other noises. So it'll be packed, it will work with Ken and you'll see it for sale, sign may be out by the stone wall. We'll see. So our freight runner's still at Fairfield. Can't have a dump truck if it doesn't dump.
This is true.
I'm now, very low confidence on their fix. And I haven't heard whether it's usable yet. We're waiting for parts. Forty-four thousand dollars, so.
Forty-four thou-?
Forty-four hundred.
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 Even so.
Been working on dirt roads. We hope to be starting Shaker Road for our paving project this year. We have failed culvert, culverts on Borough and Everton to address. That was fun. Uh, did a class six drive around on Thursday. Some of the class sixes, they've been doing some ditching. Little bit of rain and they, um, they, they're taking care of it. Welch Road, they added a bunch of stone, replaced the culvert. And there was a grader on the road, so I, I hope it's being used. Because it was still quite rough with potholes. But you have a new house on Welch Road. And if you've been down there, there's a bridge way in and. The ti- it's a tiny house, it's off to the left. All set up, skirting, gas tanks. And they're using the road quite hard. And, uh, the F one fifty bounced bottom hard many times.
We're sending the code enforcement officer down on Wednesday to take a look and then make some inquiries.
Uh, wrote some permits for new house possible on Borough Road.
Whereabouts?
Just below Mike's on the other side.
Oh.
Way out towards the end, one of the scant ones.
Oh, 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 one of the scant ones?
Yeah. And the land sold on Shaker Road, they're supposed to close, uh, last Thursday. And they wanna get the wind right across from that, it's, uh, up the road from Emerson.
Oh, did it go, yeah, okay.
Yeah. So, a little busy that way. The dump is taking up a lot of our time. Um, we shipped out seven pallets of batteries and three gay lords and a bunch of boxes of light bulbs, which hasn't been shipped out since oh eight.
Oh wow.
So it was like, who's the vendor? Do a little research. We're making cowboy bales on Tuesdays, working at it.
How long's it taken you?
It, they got it down under an hour. It's a lot, still a lot. Can, I'll call it contaminated. They did two bales and seven bombcat buckets of material with the packer.
This is new stuff or?
Yeah.
Because we've got some of the up there.
Yeah, saw their setup.
Couple times.
Yeah, so we'll have to see how it, how it bales out on Tuesday. If, uh, how, how well Reggie did.
Are you Kevin? Keith.
For the day.
Ask me out, ask me out.
I don't know the, the guy who's up there, he's from Recycle, but he was surprised that much time he took, I guess.
I don't know.
What's going on with, uh, the other stuff?
Transfers, there's a solid waste committee.
That's rich.
It may have been, I'm terrible with names. They brought up the sign.
Yeah, that's rich.
Goodie Shack is cleaned out. They said he pulled out that mail that.
Yeah, yeah.
He was, said he could use as a table, but I guess not. Um, and we're taking apart the old trailer, I don't know if anybody saw that.
I do, I do.
As I had time waiting for these deliveries.
So what are you doing, are you scrapping it?
Scraps, yeah. If you notice the front fell right down when I pulled off one street, I was like, that's a good solid.
Should've seen if we could've sold it.
So they're trying to open the Goodie Shack, as I said to you, keep it closed. Andre's gonna go out at some point for his shoulder.
Yeah, he was, he said he was, I thought he was having.
And the highway is really, they're, they're really fighting and working up there.
Yeah.
So you're gonna have day with labor ready, so there's not a lot of people know, know what's going on.
Yeah.
For a while.
Yeah.
I just see that going on.
So. And you don't know how long Andreas is gonna be out.
No. Any questions for me?
I don't think so.
We're doing the Baptist Road, the state is, no?
The Baptist Road.
Looks like they're getting ready to paint it.
It looks like they're doing some shims.
Shims.
They're replacing culverts.
Yeah, is that it?
Yeah.
At the moment.
That's what it looks like.
Yeah.
How about the culvert down at the end of the, uh, common? Is there anything gonna be done with that, the one that's down in the ground?
They marked it out, it, it was mentioned to Brian and he would like to see it raised up.
Okay.
Whether they get to it before the paper goes by, I don't know.
And they were doing something on the corner, fostering Baptist Hill. I came back from work and.
Yeah.
Looked like they were, they were putting bales of hay and pop rocks around, something there, so.
There's a drain that comes out there.
Yeah, yeah, I think that's what.
Maybe it does some ditching.
Yeah, looked like a lot of ditching on there.
Have any questions?
John and his crew also moved, uh, a lot of the big rocks down at the Riveland parking after the request from conservation. So, um, then the water came up and they weren't able to continue, so. They will get to the rest of them at some point.
Think they're quick.
Did you look at those down there?
That whole pack of, well, it was underwater. I had six, eight inches on the hill going down, forget about going to the end. I, I made it to the end of Lucy's fence line. That seemed to be the big outcry, but I still have a small pile of rock down there to get.
What do you do with it all?
Culvert took them. No cost.
What are you gonna do, grind them up?
Hammer them, crush them.
Yeah, crush them.
Yeah. Works out good for us.
Yeah.
Some of them lows, I could only get two, two rocks on them.
They were that big, huh?
I'm surprised they got another truck.
This is ten wheeler, size trucks or?
No, ours is.
A year truck, yeah.
Yeah. Drop the gate, slide them in.
Don't crush them up and we'll buy them in smaller sizes.
Thank you, John.
Thanks.
Good day, Jim. Uh, police chief couldn't be here tonight, um.
See you tonight.
He gave, uh, his, uh, uh, status is there. And, um, we got an email from the Merrimack County Sheriff's Office, uh, potential most likely cost increase in the cost of dispatch for next year.
That's an approval in there a little bit, yeah.
So the letter is in there, um. I talked to the chief about it and the, if you look at the list on the back where it gives the costs, you'll see that there's an additional, each town is gonna be asked to come up with another eight thousand and five dollars. And then there's an additional three thousand thirty-four dollars, um, for towns that are live, uh, with the, with the IMC. Um, and that, you'll see some towns don't have that and some towns do. We are live with them, basically it means that when our officers go on a call, that all the, uh, information is inputted at county, at dispatch. So when they, our officers come back from a call, all the information is already in the report. So they don't have to double efforts, um, so they can just pick up the report from where the dispatcher left off. And it, and it saves a lot of time for them to do reports at the end of the shift, so. So that's about it for two thousand dollars, it's for anybody that, that has that system, they call it being live with IMC. And again, we won't see this until the two thousand point four budget.
So the eight thousand five is one-time thing or?
Yeah, yeah, this is all just a one-time, well, it, it's an updated software, so.
Yeah.
Uh, it's, I don't know how often they update the software, but that's what this is.
And the three thousand thirty-four is an update too?
The, yeah, well, the, the way the software works is if you're not live, there's one fee. If you are alive, there's another fee because they have to update more software, so.
Guess we gotta do it, don't we?
If we'd want to stay with Merrimack County Dispatch, yeah, I guess we would. And the chief said that they've still received, uh, one application for the vacancy account. So they'll be, uh, they'll be looking at that the next week or so and, and deciding on whether to move on or not.
Do you have any, um, thoughts on that? Do you have any more questions about police, if you're involved on?
Nope.
I'm ready. Put it right along, I wanna type.
Keith?
You're on now?
Yeah. This is Keith Pike from, uh, TD Bank. Come on, Mary. Mary in here, also Mary, she does a lot of, uh, she's the accounting clerk and works closely with Keith. So Keith is gonna explain basically the program that we have with this bank. Uh, and then we'll talk about potential investments and other, other things that we might do. If possible.
And just so you know, like, not Keith.
Two thousand and eight maybe, nine?
Yeah.
Yeah, but, but back in, right, back to what you're talking about?
Yeah.
Yeah, long time. I saw the name, I'm like, that's a good one, eh?
That's somebody that hasn't given up yet.
No, I appreciate the time to meet, I'm Keith Pike, um, I'm the senior government banker for TD Bank. I've been at TD Bank, um, for about nine years. Uh, previously I was at a prior bank, um, so I've been in banking since two thousand. Um, so definitely, um, you know, this is a very important business for the bank. Uh, I've been in the government space for about seventeen years now between the two banks. Uh, very interesting times, I mean, very unique times right now with what we're seeing with what the Fed is trying to do to accomplish curbing inflation, yet still trying to manage a, a pretty challenging economy, so. We've managed a relationship here at the town since two thousand nine. Um, we saw a nice lift in interest from twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-three because we've seen the Fed move, you know, almost five hundred basis points since April of last year. So year over year, uh, last year we saw about ninety-two hundred dollars in, in, in interest. Um, this year so far you've seen about twenty-two thousand, so you've seen a nice lift and the year's not even halfway over. So we feel we're one of the proactive banks when it comes to the in, interest rate environment. There are two different types of banks, reactive and proactive. Uh, every Fed meeting, we have a rate committee that basically reviews the market conditions and the current rate conditions of what we're seeing from the competition. And then we typically will move our rates accordingly based off that committee. So it's not like we're just sitting there waiting for you to call us to move rates. Um, I, I will tell you one of the things that we, we want to talk about as well in conjunction with this conversation, I know, uh, Ken, we talked a little bit about it. Um, but there's a lot of fraud, I mean, everybody has heard about what happened over in the town of Peterborough. Uh, unfortunately that was a very bad situation. Um, so that's one area that I see as a weakness for the town right now, is you're not doing anything to protect yourself against ACH or check fraud. So there are two services that we strongly recommend, um, being a public entity, uh, unfortunately you're a big target. Um, you print a nice pretty report every single year telling everybody what you do, when you do it and how you do it, and it's all over the internet.
So what's, what's involved in fraud?
Yeah, so the two types of fraud that we see are typically ACH fraud or check fraud. So ACH fraud, all I need is your account number, I don't even need your routing number, I can go to the FDIC website and find any bank's routing number. So the frauds that we're seeing are, is you've got these fraudsters that basically are creating fraudulent credit cards, fraudulent accounts at Amazon. And literally all they can do, or all they will do is when they go to their website to make a payment or make a purchase of something, they use your bank and routing. By the time, thank goodness that Mary does a great job, you know, checking your account, that, you know, taking a look at your account on a daily basis. So you dispute it and notify the bank as soon as possible, but it's still fraud. If you go through a police report, get the file and affidavit, there's a lot of work involved in that process. So that's one type of fraud that we're seeing. And then the other type, the, the most common and the easiest to perpetrate is check fraud. So literally all we need again is an account number, think about the number of checks that you've written over the years, right? I mean, just a matter of when, not the targeting. So we're seeing a lot of fraud around the postal service where basically fraudsters are stealing the mail. Um, you're seeing disgruntled employees at any particular vendor that you could pay, maybe you pay Staples, maybe you pay Amazon. And all they need is to take a picture with their phone of your account number and they sell it to the black market. And then all of a sudden, you'll start to see checks hit your account. It could be a mystery shop scam, it could be a lottery type scam where they produce these checks. Or even they have these bad actors basically that they hire someone to go to a bank with a check with a fake ID drawn off your account, saying it's an employee's paycheck or a, or a severance paycheck and they'll try to negotiate it and cash it. If you don't have the protection in place, those items potentially could clear your account. And we're seeing it happen every single day. So the two services that we recommend are either ACH and check cause to pay, where basically you would provide information to the bank, every time you do an AP run or payroll run, you would upload those files to the bank, so then items are presented, they're matched up. And so then if there is an item that is fraudulent, you would be able to catch it and notify the bank, not after the fact. Because after the fact, you've gotta go through a, it's not a fun process.
So we don't have that activity?
You're not, yeah, no, some of it's driven by your accounting software, do you guys use accounting software, Houston, Tyler? What do you use, or I can be fine.
QuickBooks.
QuickBooks, oh, so QuickBooks, yeah, so QuickBooks is not the most friendly when it comes with that type of service, but we can help you create a, we call it a CSV file. Um, it's very easy to create, you have all the instructions, so we can still do it through QuickBooks. But yeah, those are two, two services definitely that we recommend.
And one of the fees, one of the fees that you would charge for that?
Uh, it's all driven by volume, so it's driven by the number of items that you write. So, so I mean, I think it's pretty cost effective, I don't think you'll see any, it basically will mean that you'll get a little less. So, so I mean, I think it's pretty cost-effective. I don't think you'll see any, it basically will mean that you'll get a little less interest than you would normally because there, it, it is a service that obviously we have resources behind the scenes that we're op, you know, optimizing. I could put together something for you to kind of show you what it would look like, but I think it would be minimal for the impact that it would do to protect you, absolutely.
There's always something in there.
Yeah, it is, unfortunately.
We are in the middle of, uh, uh, cybersecurity audit also.
Yep, Primax?
Primax.
Using Atom Group?
Yeah, uh, well, we, we're using Atom and we've, uh, progressed to CISA.
Okay, CISA, yep, oh yeah, yeah, no RICO, no of those guys really won't, yep.
They're coming, uh, in July.
Exciting.
Uh, to do a cybersecurity audit.
Beautiful.
For us, it's a two to three hour.
Yep.
Uh, where they look at the hardware and everything else and.
It's a huge res, huge resource. We've been trying to get that out to people, I mean, I think I shared that communication.
Yep.
They did, uh, last year, they did a twenty-three page kinda guide that I sent to every one of our clients because it's just so important that you have to keep this top of mind. You're a huge target. I mean, knock on.
Wood somewhere?
You know, you haven't had it, I mean, but it, it, it's happening every day. I mean, we just moved over a small town on the western part of the state and literally we were going live the first week of May, their prior bank, they were reconciling their April bank statement and they had three checks hit their account. So you just never know, that's how good they are, so. But that's a great resource for you. I know there is some federal money that's out there, um, um, they should be sharing it from the Atom Group. I know there's some stuff out there, trying to get people to move to the Daca platform. There's a bunch of stuff, yeah, good, good.
So we're, we're making headway on that.
Yeah, it's so important. It doesn't matter the size, they don't care right now. I mean, it doesn't matter if you're a big town, small town, they, they're coming after you. I mean, they're just, it's a nine, nine billion dollar industry, there's nine billion dollars of fraud happening every year. Scary.
It is.
Very scary.
So how does that ever get solved by the people that are trying to solve it?
That's a question for CISA and a question for the Secret Service. Um, and actually, I have to say, that's one of the things that, that's been really good is we actually have good support locally between CISA, Rick and his team, Jason, and then also, um, Tin Benitez from the Secret Service. He's a great resource as well. Uh, we've partnered with them after NHMA and then also when we just had them in ASBO as well, just to try to educate people. I mean, I, I can say it till I'm blue in the face, but at the end of the day, when they have the Secret Service come in and tell you about all this stuff going on, people are like, whoa, it's just, it's happening. And a lot of people wanna, you know, don't wanna think it's gonna happen to them, but it's happening. It's just you have to protect yourself. It's, it's crazy. So I think again, it goes back to, you know, when we look at this industry, the government space, public sector space, well, we always look at three things. Safety and security should always be number one. Liquidity should be number two, because again, you collect it and you spend it. And then three is yield. So yield's important, don't get me wrong, because we have to try to keep up with what inflation we're seeing. Um, but that should be the order that you, you should always be looking at when you manage these types of funds, so. And just to touch base on the safety, security, um, TD Bank is the only AA rated bank by S and P in New Hampshire. There are a lot of banks in New Hampshire, a lot of unrated banks in New Hampshire, so you have to cross your Ts and dot your Is. We've seen three bank failures this year, it's been all over the news. FDIC stepped in and basically bailed all three of them out, or then bail them out, they backed the deposits, um. So, and, and that's very unique and very odd, because I think if that didn't happen, I think there would be other issues stemming in the industry. So just to make sure you're clear and understand that we protect every dollar over the FDIC limit for the town of two fifty with a federal home loan bank letter of credit. You get a, a, a statement every single month showing you the collateral protection that the bank provides. God forbid, if something was to happen to the bank, literally you would draw on that letter of credit and tell basically Bank of New York Mellon, the custodian, where to put the money, because obviously you keep the bank if the bank doesn't fail. But again, we're the only AA rated bank by S and P in New Hampshire right now. So very strong bank. We, just to give you some other additional information, uh, you know, obviously we're a top ten bank. Um, again, we're the only AA rated bank by S and P. We manage almost twenty-nine billion dollars in public funds from Maine to Florida. We're good, being safe, we're number four in the country. Which is pretty amazing enough, I'm trying to tout our horn, but, but that's pretty amazing when you look at the three larger banks in the, in the US that are the top three. It's the B of A's, the Chases and the Wells of the world. Those are very large institutions, you don't see a lot of them in New Hampshire, obviously. Bank of America has a presence and Chase just opened a few branches. Um, but that's, that's who we're up against, and so it's just, it's pretty impressive when those banks are in forty, fifty states and we're only in fifty. So it shows you we understand this business, uh, it's a very important business for the bank. You know, towns and cities don't come and go like small businesses or corporations that get bought up, go out of business, right? And that's why the bank sees the value in that relationship. So again, we appreciate your business. Um, what else did I wanna talk about? So I think fraud is the bigger piece, like I said, I wanna talk about it. So I'm gonna talk about, kind of what Ken was talking about, investment. So we have seen a nice lift in interest rates, right? Like I said, we've seen the Fed move rates, um. You know, there's a lot of pundits and economists out there speaking, and I, I mean, I, I'm not an economist and I'm not a, I'm not, no expert per se. I mean, I follow the news, I think it's very important, you know, very important because I can help my clients. Um, you know, we think we've reached the crest of what the Fed is gonna do, and that's what a lot of the pundits are saying. You're starting to see forecasts of potential rate cuts now, because, and you can see the yield curve, if you start to go out, if any of you invest personally in CDs or anything like that, you can see the yield curve has gone down. The longer you go, the lower the rate, and that's by design, because that's the, the market signaling there's no way we can keep interest rates at this level, right? It's having impact. We're seeing it on housing, we're seeing it in the commercial real estate, we're seeing it uh, in, in the works, in the workplace. We've been fortunate because we had a pretty strong economy, um, and we had a pretty good boom there for, for a while. So it'll be interesting to see where this kind of all, all kind of transitions to. Uh, but it doesn't mean you can't do better, right? I mean, so again, when you look at that ladder that I kind of, uh, you know, approached, the safety, security, liquidity, you know, when you want to, um, sorry, safety, security, liquidity and yield. And when you look at yield, right, sometimes you have to sacrifice liquidity to pick up yield, right? So you may flip-flop that. What I've seen in this space, it's not like you have tons of excess cash, although you're in a very strong cash position. The town has been always in a very strong cash position. But, but it's not like you have all this extra money that you don't, can't spend or don't wanna spend, right? So, but you do have some, you know, unrestricted fund balance and so forth, so how can you make that work for you? And that's where maybe taking a look at using a CD ladder that's still fully protected by collateral. Um, what I've seen is a best practice in this space in the, the town side, what's your biggest expense? It's the school, correct? The bulk of the money you collect on the tax side is the school revenue you're collecting. So you should have a payment scheduled to the school, and so that's what we've kind of used as an approach. Mary actually shared her, so about what, one hundred and fifty thousand? I think you, on a monthly basis, send over to the school. So, so like that could be the next approach when you have your next wave of tax money coming in July is you could take, and the second half is always tougher than the first half of the year because you have your county payment, but you also have the actual tax rate setting process, right? And so first half of the year revenue is pretty easy, right, because you know, right, you're setting, you're not waiting for a tax rate setting process. So, and we've had towns where it's gotten challenging at the second half of the year, because you're waiting for ERA, maybe there's reports, the school didn't get done. And so it's a tighter second half of the year, especially knowing that you have that county payment. So what I typically would recommend is like a CD ladder where you could take some money, like the school money, and ladder it and have it come due from when you're ready to make that payment to the school. That would be the approach that I would see, that would add value without creating a lot of extra work, um, and, and kind of make that process work for you, so.
What's the rate right now?
Well, I mean, they ve, they vary. I mean, we're, we're seeing rates in the, in the fours, so you probably pick up a, a little over a full basis point based off what you. So our program today is paying you interest on your account, you see that interest every month. So this would be an enhancement to that, so I think you'd be able to pick up, pick up a full basis point, if not a little bit more. And again, the rates are pretty volatile, so they're changing every day, so I mean, I hate to quote your rate and change tomorrow, but when you're ready, we could definitely kind of look at that. But there's value in that, without creating a lot of extra work, so.
Yeah, I think that's what the, the board is interested in, is, is something along the lines where it's not gonna create a lot of extra work for Al or Mary or, or anything.
Yeah, you don't have a big finance staff, you just don't. I mean, that's the way this, this public sector space works, so. You know, like a corporation that has a CFO, full-time AP, full-time, right? You just don't have it.
Right, yeah.
Right, but you run a pretty big business, right? When you look at your operating budget, I include the school money, it's a pretty decent-sized operating budget. But that's where, again, you're sacrificing a little liquidity, so that's why the planning piece is important. That's why I use that school as an example, because I know that's one of your biggest, biggest expenses. Same thing with the county payment. You know the county payment's due by the fifteenth of December, so you could take that money as well and ladder that out and have it due in November, right? It's all about that cash flow process and managing that process, so, without creating a lot of work. Other thoughts, questions?
It's all greed to me.
Greed, does that make sense?
I, I just went through that whole ladder and process with my bank.
Yeah, it's getting a little trickier though, because when you look at the yield curve, once you get past three months, it goes down. You go up to twelve months, you go up, I mean, if you go out even longer, I mean, we're under three percent, once you go up past four, five, because they, they can't keep rates decided, they can't do it.
No, no, that's, that's the same.
It's gonna be a little bit of a juggling act, right? It's that soft landing that you keep hearing about. They're trying to keep the soft landing, well, we'll see how long that, that lasts.
Because just having it in a regular, personal setting, I don't get.
Well, the other part of this too is, like I was telling you, there, the two banks, trains of thought, is the proactive and reactive. There are a lot of banks out there, think about what the Fed did, right? They put trillions of dollars into the market. Where did that money all go? It went into the banks, right? So you have all the PPP money, CARES money, ARPA money, right? So there are a lot of banks that have a lot of money, right? So it becomes a challenge for them to kind of manage that, and do they, you know, what can they, if they're not lending, if there's a different environment right now, how do they make yield off of that? Just because the Fed moved rates up doesn't necessarily mean they're gonna be able to pay something on it. So that cash is slowly drying up as it's being spent, so it'll be, you'll start to hear banks will start chasing for rate, and you're starting to see some of them, you know, advertise, you know, these, you know, longer-term CDs, because they want you, they're banking on the Fed lowering rates so they can lock it in before the Fed cuts. But that's not really the immune space. You, you, you collect it and spend it, so you can't go long, long-term. You know, maybe the trustee of trust fund, there can be a strategy there, but, but not really in the, in the, in the immune space on the town city side.
So I do wanna ask another question. So at the present time, the only option for investment right now would be the CD ladder with TD Bank?
So that would be, yeah, that would be the, uh, besides, I mean, you're already in an interest-sparing product or program that's designed that way.
Right.
That would be the only other option that you'd wanna look at, potentially.
And then if we do wish to go forward with that, will you send us some information on writing so that?
Oh, yeah, I can, yeah, I can, yeah, I can email you with kind of a breakdown of what that would look like, and then, yeah, you would decide what you'd wanna do and we can do all the paperwork through email, absolutely.
Okay.
Yep.
Just curious.
Yep.
I have a question. Sure. How do you juggle knowing, are you better off to keep your money in where our analysis is being, is taking place as far as the interest we're earning? Like, if you take money away from that balance, that's gonna go down.
Yeah, yeah, so.
And so, what makes more sense?
Yeah, it's trying, so that's the other part of it, it's right, you're using services at the bank, right? You have direct deposit, you're using different services. And so what we try to do is balance that out, so we pay what they call's an earnings credit rate, and I'm probably getting a little too technical. Um, but this earnings credit rate is the rate that we pay that the bank keeps to cover this cost of the services. And then we, we pay you interest on those investable or excess balances. So we would have to go through the trends, like I would go through the trends and look at that. The nice thing is I was able to bump the earnings credit rate up in December when we saw that lift in December. So I, I can, I can probably go back through a couple of years' worth of history to kind of just look at that, to kind of normalize what we think we wanna keep in there. Just knowing that you, I mean, again, I mean, I think your schedule for the most part is pretty consistent, what you pay the school, the county, any, unless you have any big expenditures. I did look at the cash flow, yeah, I did, like, yeah.
Cash flow for the past two years.
Yeah, yeah, which is very similar to the, what I would, there's a little lag in the analysis, so, so, but yeah, for the most part, I looked at that and I think, you know, I think it's reasonable, we can figure that out. So we know what that, that point should be, because again, you don't wanna get to the point where you don't have enough to cover, right? And then all that work for the CDs, you end up having, right, I mean, fees, so we, we wanna balance that out. But I think it's definitely maintainable, definitely manageable, so. But we can definitely, you know, provide that kind of background of that analysis.
Anyone?
No.
Thank you.
You're welcome. No, thank you.
Good to see you again.
Yeah, great to see you. Awesome. So I can circle back? You want me to circle back with you and Ken? Is that, do I, I don't think I have your email, uh?
Giving, uh, light show for you.
Right there. I'll just simply go.
All right, Mariah, sell number.
Sure, perfect, yeah, absolutely, yeah. Thank you, Michael. Awesome.
Well, thank you.
You're welcome, thank you. Appreciate you, Ken. Have a good evening.
Thanks, Keith.
You're welcome. Also, remember the email, absolutely, thank you.
That was a lot of information. Yeah, yeah, um.
The scam, scamming is a serious issue. You know?
Yeah.
We just had something happen this morning on our credit card, you know, saying that, uh, what was the terminology? Well, it was a scam, because we called, you know, the office correctly and they said, no, you don't wanna listen to that, you don't wanna respond. And they're catching so many people, and if they ever try to catch our organization, it would be disastrous. I, I think it's worth checking in a little further on that end of things. And do we wanna do some comparative shopping? With Merrimack County Savings Bank, uh, there's an individual there that I had informed a while ago that we might be interested. I don't know that it's worth switching over, because that would be a nightmare, you know, for Mary and for others to do that.
Yeah, and I, I think that, um, that at least where we have all our other account with TD, it's all a lot less legwork for the staff and you to, to stay with them. Um, and, and I, I mean, I honestly don't feel that the rates would be that much different, that it would be, um, worth the, the, the hours, the, you know, counting time to, to do something like that. That would mean we'd have to cut a check, bring it to Merrimack County, establish the CD, and then, um, I don't know, depending on what the, what the analysis shows, how much and for how long, we could be every quarter cashing in a CD and then starting another one two weeks later, so.
Yeah, I mean, it doesn't sound like doing this ladder, CD ladder, is gonna gain much for us, but it could be positive and that it's not gonna go negative.
Yeah, a, a full basis point and depending on what we're, what we're looking at, you know, I, I don't know. Um, again, looking at the cash flow and the analysis, you know, we might get a few thousand dollars extra a month, something like that, so.
Okay, Mary, what do you think?
I feel like it wouldn't make sense for us to move some of our money out of TD Bank to somewhere else, because TD Bank is, like Keith was saying, they keep track of our way of doing things, so that's how they, how it affects the analysis, um, what do you call it, earning analysis?
Yeah.
And, so he takes all of our funds into consideration for that, and I can't imagine that they would still do that for us
Yep.
if we were gonna take our money somewhere else. And I know that there's dips at the, you know, sometimes when we're paying the big items and when we're waiting for tax money to come in, um. So I don't know if that would really be in our favor.
Mm-hmm.
And it, and, and like Ken said, it could create a lot more work for the office staff. And I know that when he was talking about the, uh, ladder effect of the interest rate, most, most of the ones that I've seen, because I've checked around, they're, they're within, they're almost the same.
Mm-hmm.
Because they, they can only lock it in, I forgot what they can only, it's, and some of them can't even lock it in. For a three-month CD or, it's around four percent.
Okay, wha, what's the position of you select board members on doing the CD ladder?
I, you know, I, personally, that's what I'm doing, and it, it's a good deal because in the short term, you, you more or less man, budget it, like you do your own personal money, so if you've got a big expense coming, and I, the one that they had talked to me about was a nine-month CD, because it was the, for me personally. And that had the best interest rate, and then the guy said after nine months, if you don't need it, then if you wanna do more long-term, the interest rate is lower, unlike Keith said. And he said, but every nine mon, months, you can just turn it over, leave, if you don't.
Or decide at that point.
Or take it out.
Right, if you need it, or
Yeah, if you need it a few.
If you can still afford to keep investing it.
Yep, so it, it's, I, I really like the ladder effect, I so, I think that's a good deal. So it it's, I, I really like the ladder effect, and so I think that's a good deal.
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, I think it makes sense, huh?
So, so we then, I guess through you, Ken, let him know that we do wanna do the CD ladder.
Yeah, so he's gonna, he's gonna send us, uh, he's gonna do the analysis based on on our earnings, similar to what the cash flow that Mary combined was, and then let us know what our best options would be, and then I'll bring it back to you guys, here's, here's the options, and then come up with a decision on that.
And at the same time, is it possible to have him give us a rate for the, uh, what was it, the fraud service?
Yeah, the fraud, the in-check protection, yes.
Yeah, I'd be curious to know how much that's gonna be, but.
Well, that would, that would use, I don't think he's gonna be able to give us, this is what it's gonna cost.
No, it's based on.
I think he's going, it's going to affect what we earn every month, that earnings.
Yes.
Yeah, analysis. Yeah.
Yeah, because it's based on the, on the, uh, volume of checks that we write.
Right.
So it's gonna fluctuate, but I think he could probably give us an idea of, it would, it would come out of our earnings. So he would say, well, maybe, you know, uh, point ten percent or point two percent may, you may see a drop to have that fraud protection there. He may, he would probably have a good idea.
I think it's worthwhile to to start that.
I, I do too.
Yeah, I do, yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, we're, we're working with the feds on the cybersecurity, and I think it makes sense to, to continue this across the boards.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Good.
Well, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
How you doing?
So we have to sign some things before.
Yep, Mike Tarduff should be here around six fifteen.
We will sign a few letters. We have an accounts payable manifest in the amount of one hundred nine thousand five hundred sixty-one dollars and five cents.
So, second?
Hmm, then we have a payroll manifest in the amount of forty-three thousand fifty-five dollars forty-four cents.
Second?
All right, next, we have a zoning verification. What is, is there any other single basis?
So I guess the planning board needs that, or the site plan, for the, um, the daycare that's under the Quaker School.
Oh.
Okay. Or who wants these, you need to go back to the planning board, I think it's a state.
Yeah, that's what, that's what it's for. It's a state form that that has to be signed by the board of selectmen verifying that that facility is in the zone.
Yeah, I think there's only one.
I think there's two spots.
Is it Ken had to sign, no, did you sign it?
I had to sign it, I think.
Yeah, I think there's only two.
Yeah.
That's on both these lines then, right?
Correct, because it should be two lines there, right, for you guys?
We all three sign it, or?
You can all three sign it.
Yeah. Yeah. That's scribbled on. I'll write little so you'll be room.
Appreciate that.
My one, eight and B signed?
Yeah.
Okay.
Please.
Who does TD have?
The TD.
The TD.
Data retention plan policy.
Up there as well for us, Ken?
Yeah, uh, yeah.
Okay, I think Ken needs to sign.
Okay, well, that was recommended by the audit, auditors line.
Yeah, I'll believe it. For Kent.
Seventeen. The, which, which one's got them, I'm saying?
I think it was.
He's on.
I signed, you signed, Ken signed, right?
Yeah, we all signed.
Oh, all right, never mind, I think we're, all right.
Yeah.
Do you wanna just look at that, that sure before me?
Yep.
So th- this is something the audit had recommended, yeah. And there's a.
Yeah, don't call us that, you're.
This is stat, statute one, is it the same one? All right. And this is something you have to keep on file, yeah. Storage agreement. Well, this is with the.
Storage, storage agreement is with the church or the fair for the garage.
Yeah.
So annual.
We signed one last year.
Yep, yep.
No, we have no idea whether we're gonna start working on that.
No, I mean, we have, we have a cap reserve account, but there's been no plans or, I, I had a, uh, estimate three years ago of around fourteen thousand dollars. Um, I don't know what, what it would cost today.
Yep.
The prices, yeah.
Was this to fix the doors and?
Well, it was to do the outside, there's some rot on the, on the fascia boards and the soffits and fix that, put a new roof on it, new windows. Um, and and that, at least, that, that was phase one. Phase two was the potential for putting, uh, insulation in and some kind of, uh, interior walls on to prep it for a long-term storage for town, all-town office records. That's, that was the plan, that's the plan for that building, that was the long-term plan for that building.
Yeah.
Was for a long-term storage of of town records, um, to, to get power out there and and, um, there's already a conduit. When we built a new building, we had a conduit out there, so we could do, uh, se- secure a safe storage for, for our records.
Oh, you mean that down the basement now, or?
Well, we have some down there, but, uh, we're not ADA compliant if we store records down there that have to be searched, so. That was the plan, was that at some point, because it's all on one level, there's the ADA compliant, we had to be, so.
So we need it just for town use at that point?
Pardon me?
We need it just for town use at that point?
Correct, that's correct, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Well, this is a, about renting the town hall, the facilities agreement?
Not for renting, no.
No, I mean for.
Oh, just for use of the town.
Rental of town.
That's for rental of any town property, or use of any town property.
Oh, any town. Oh, okay.
Yeah. Now, I think that was under the new business, but we, we'll talk more.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
There's a few more things to sign, but.
Yeah, okay, uh, we've got, uh, uh, is it on here? Mike Brash, I know that came in late, uh.
Oh, yeah, that's the warden, uh, deputy warden.
Yeah.
Um, that needs your signature.
Yep.
Ken, this does require motion, just signatures, the, uh, storage?
It what?
This does not require a motion, just signatures.
No.
No.
So that this two were signing this, or?
No, this, this is what made it, I was kinda close.
That's the storage.
Go look at that.
Yep, yep, I did look at this.
Oh, you did?
Yeah.
So I guess my question is, the, the church has, for the fair, has no, they've got no plan just to find elsewhere, as far as you know?
At the last couple of years, I know you talked to them about it, and they said they were gonna be searching, and they haven't come back with anything yet, so.
Yeah. Boy.
We'll send that over to them, put their signatures on it?
I, I think they really should be, because if we have the opportunity and everything.
Yep. Okay.
Yeah. They, they need to start looking. Oh. Did you say anything in here that caused you great problems?
No.
I haven't either.
Nope.
Do you see the church is gonna start, or possibly gonna start serving alcohol?
Really?
Yeah, I don't.
I've not heard that.
There was something that came across my desk.
Really?
There's a whole series of things you have to, your people that serve you have to be certified and.
Yep, trained and.
Trained, yeah. You just hand this back, yeah?
Yeah.
That, that should be able to, really able to new business.
Yeah, okay, we'll, we'll leave it at that, and then we'll discuss it. We've got a classic road waiver on Asbury Road, uh, from Michael Kay and Catherine Zarakotis.
Mm-hmm. And it had the comments, that's the, um, sucked the road off of Asbury Road, the range, rangeway or range road, whatever you wanna call it.
Yeah.
Um, and that's been reviewed by planning, and, uh, I think Ken, uh, you talked about that last meeting. And the fire chief and highway and police were all set on that, so.
Your rules?
It is, I think the road agent put comments, his comments on air, so.
Yeah.
Okay.
Greg, did you guys do a, a walkabout, or?
Uh, we sent people over to locate it independently, the planning board position is that they don't have, they don't have a position on that, no.
Understood, okay.
Where's the ranger?
Yeah, so go, you know how it turns the asphalt just before you go down to the track?
Yes.
Well, that road right there on that.
Oh, with it, yeah, oh, okay.
The old brown cemetery's up there.
There's already a couple houses out there.
One.
There is?
Yeah.
Yeah.
There's one up there.
Or one.
And if you need any, um, signatures on, or anything on sending the church reminder.
Okay, yep, yep, we'll, I'll send a letter, um, just to pull on with that.
Is that going back in here?
Yes, yes. It shows a certificate of appreciation, but I don't see it.
What's that?
It's in there.
I think it's right at the bottom.
Oh, there, oh, okay.
Yeah. That's, uh, for the bar pipe, um, it's made it known it's being, it's done on the conservation, so I just printed that up.
Yeah.
We've probably been asked about something like that, so.
Something that we can.
Hmm, really good.
That puts on.
Yeah.
And next, we have yield tax warrant in the amount of a hundred and twelve dollars and seven five cents, give and take seven five cents.
I was afraid you would say that.
I figured it was.
Twenty-three.
Yes.
We have no, we have no.
Can I talk to Cheryl on that? Yes, we're going to sign a property tax warrant this, for the first half, for three million eight hundred twenty-four thousand.
Can't print off, though.
Five hundred fifty-two dollars. Thank you. You won't. Do you need to make a motion?
Yes.
So, for a second. One of those heads, I'll let her.
I hear those words in my.
Yeah. Yeah, if you don't sign that, all that money we were just talking about with the bank permits.
Comes a boot.
I saw, I already watched. It's just too many.
So this, yeah. We have learned, so this is a wall.
So you just gotta get discovered, you show it, and it's all.
Yeah.
Be back.
So now it's a little more tried and true, and we know it gets the, the best measure. All right, so.
So we have a can of, is this on for that?
No.
Ah, gotcha, okay.
That should be on the, there's two places to sign.
Sign this?
Yeah, it should be.
Yeah, okay, very good. Which is, I wanted to make sure I didn't miss any.
Take a, yeah.
It happens, but I signed twice, so I have that. It takes care of.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving right along.
Yep, Mike Tarduff from Central Hampshire Plating. Yep, Mike Carter from Central Hampshire Planning.
And Greg.
And Greg.
Greg Heath, yep.
From Canterbury.
Good evening.
I didn't move till Canterbury until I was two.
I know. I feel like I've got to say something to everybody.
We're here to talk about the Best in Hampshire brand of food, or, uh, our housing planning, which is a, you know, a nice kind of next step as we work to finish the master plan. I've also sent over the, uh, final phase, phase three of the master plan. And it's actually that, you know, just to touch base with that, we were talking a bit about how to, how to bring it home, how to, you know, you know, it's taking a lot longer than they thought. You know, go to help with that. These things all take their own, they, 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 they have a life of their own, but the fun part, it's all been fun. Visioning sessions were fun, it's all been fun, but the implementation chapter, and that's part of that phase three. So, to, to lay out kind of those recommendations, and the higher priorities, and kind of, you know, lay out some, uh, planning board, you know, next steps. It's nice to be able to spend some time over the next year, if you wanted to move forward on the Best in Hampshire program. And, um, you know, we've got a number of these projects that are underway in our region, and there's a bunch around the state. You could, you know, the monitor has really been spending a lot of time talking about housing in the Hampshire, Invest in Hampshire program. But to, uh, to get people involved, and, you know, really have that, that community engagement, so if, if we're gonna be successful at town meeting, if you're gonna be successful at town meeting, make sure people aren't hearing about it for the first time at a public hearing for, uh, for, for town meeting. So, uh, those things that have percolated out through the master plan, you know, whether it's, uh, seven, exit seventeen, exit eighteen, potential for there. Um, improving the cluster ordinance, looking at the workforce, workforce ordinance to make it a little bit more usable, all those things. It's like just right off the, right as we finish up the master plan, ready to jump in to figure out how to use it. So, uh, we come into you with a, a, an application that has a line for Ken to sign it. If, uh, if you wanted to move forward on that, we've, like I said, we've had, I think we have three underway right now, and we're talking with a, a fifth town as well out of our twenty for these projects, there's a bunch around the state. Uh, it's pass, it's full pass through funds. So, the, the way that, the, the contract works is that, um, you know, it's, it's a, it's a grant award to the town. We try to do all the admin. So, you know, I would put together a report, a monthly report with Greg's help, but then when we send in an invoice, basically give Ken the whole process to submit the, the reimbursement request to Plan New Hampshire, Invest New Hampshire. They pay the town back, and then we pay us for those, for that work. There's also a little bit of funds in there for a stipend for, um, three members of, you know, any board, or, you know, anybody, any, uh, uh, you know, town person to, uh, to go to the, the Housing Academy. And that's the, the, the Invest New Hampshire, sweeten the pot to get someone to commit, you know, as we go, it's tough to, to get, you know, just to, you know, spend some time on your, you know, on, on, uh, housing and learning about housing and, you know, community engagement. How much are we talking? Two hundred and eighty bucks.
Oh.
For, per, for, per person.
You can retire off.
So, so, uh, and you wanna, you wanna jump in, Greg?
Yeah, I, I agree well. I, what, my feeling is that the, we have a planning board that is, I mean, all volunteers, I do know, who have really jumped into this process and are really educated themselves and have come up to speed on it. And if we don't move forward with the zoning part of this now, we're gonna have to then bring a whole group up to speed. And not only the planning board members, the town people that have come through these visioning sessions. So, all this stuff is being presented and is in the front of the mind, or in the recent past. And I think we have a strong, uh, position to build on, and, uh, it would be a shame to not take advantage of it, is my feeling of it. Plus, we've got, uh, a lot of the funding for it. Uh, did you want, uh, he did ask for numbers.
Sure, so the, it's, it's about, it's a little over twenty thousand dollars from pass through. And actually, I, I didn't, I didn't mention the other part of that proposal is to, um, update subdivision site rights. And with the idea that, to make them a little bit more usable for, you know, the public using those, combine them, so, you know, we've had some success with that. Where instead of having site, subdivision and site plan as separate documents, put them in a singular ordinance, a lot of things are similar process. Uh, the idea that it's, it's clarifying the, the planning process, but also, you know, making it easier for the planning board as well as the public.
Uh, and we really have a lot of contradictions in our paperwork right now, and some things that are con- contradictory.
Yeah, I still didn't mention that.
Or to, uh, contradictory to laws that maybe have been passed since the, the, those, uh, those regulations and procedures were written up. So, it'd be great to get, we actually, the, the planning board took a, took a swipe at it, and it, it took us, you know, three or four meetings, and basically everybody said, we just don't ask the expertise to deal with this. And, uh, I, I don't see how the planning, uh, volunteer planning board could actually deliver what, what Mike's talking about delivering here.
So, um, Matt Monahan from our office, and Matt Taylor, two of our Matts, will, uh, will play a big role as well. Uh, you know, they've got the most experience with, with regulations, and, but, um, you know, a big part of it is, is being out there and talking about it to whoever will hear us. So, we were talking today about, you know, having poster boards of materials at the fair, um, you know, having it just at the library, and, and, you know, go into anybody who will hear us to talk about it. The success we've had over the last few years with the town meeting, breaking zoning changes, is, is again, not, not coming up with a great idea in November, but talking about it now. And there's a lot in here, so it doesn't all have to be town meeting twenty-four either. So, you know, I think there's a decision as to what's palatable to get that, to break the town meeting. Outside of the, you know, the regulations, that can be done by the planning board. So, you know, be set for, okay, what are the things you really wanna go to town meeting twenty-four, and then all the materials can be ready for twenty-five. You know, and that's kind of part of our process.
Such as we deal with, just for example, exit seventeen, exit eighteen, excuse this year for twenty twenty-four, and then we try to do the cluster development for the following year perhaps, uh, or if, uh, if people feel that the, uh, there's another priority, it's better.
I think we'll figure it out as we go, as to what, you know, kind of rises up to be that, 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 the, the highest priority, and also the one that you think you're gonna have the most success at town meeting.
Right.
So, we'd love to get started on, on the implementation, while at the same time finishing up the master plan, 'cause that flies.
Yeah, I, I didn't, I didn't print out the new contract for the master plan, I, I just did one copy, that's, that's the young thing, but this is the last page.
And we had, we'd identified, uh, three thousand dollars of funding in the, on that phase two contract. We've got, in addition to two thousand dollars in match, but basically, implementation, town services, uh, we'll look at, uh, just introduction, executive summary, uh, bring home. And we had one other, we had demographics too, now that we've got to do, uh, you know, American Community Survey and Census data.
That's our story. You're really, uh, with Conservation Commission help, finally, uh, seemed to have broken the baton on the, uh, on, on that, uh, resources, natural resources chapter, and that's really, uh, it's really great to see that, that this finally comes to a close.
Yeah.
Not quite yet.
So, we are finishing up even just phase two, 'cause we had a lot of the land use and economic development kind of coming out. We wanted to finish up the natural features, so we'll finish that up, if we jump into phase three, but also basically be talking about the different tools that have come out, and, you know, getting a jumpstart on, on where we can be for town meeting.
Yes.
Yeah.
So, so on the application, so what Invest New Hampshire is looking for is agreement by the board that Ken can sign it. We may get a question back, so sometimes I've been asked to then make a change, so, hey, can we, can we add this? Greg was just asking me, you know, is this a template for these, and it's just we've, we've now on our fifth one, so we've learned what, what they like to see and, and, you know, from the applications, but we may get another question, you know, clarify the timeline, clarify some of the milestones. So, I may end up asking you to assign one again.
All right, so we'll make a motion that we, uh, have Ken sign the Invest Age Housing Opportunity Planning Grant Application.
Should I go?
All in paper?
All right.
What's the exact?
I was just saying, I, I've, I've learned in my old age to say no to meetings, so I said no to two others.
Okay, you went back like that.
Yeah, it's early, I could probably make one, but, uh.
Enjoy the evening.
I think I'm not done.
And the, uh, finishing up the master plan is a separate agreement, and that's already been, it, they signed.
We did that, yeah, we did that.
And please, any input from you guys on this process, uh, you know, we've, we've taken a lot of input from a lot of people on the master plan, and, uh, intend to continue doing that, but the ordinance changes, and so, uh, please keep up, if you don't hear it, we can't address it.
Correct.
Ken, this slide, this is the slide.
I just told you that there's a process for the, the young people, so we can keep this as a community that the young people can afford to live here.
So, you know, you guys did skew a little bit younger than other towns at even just the visioning session when we were talking about housing.
'Cause that's what I hear a lot of, you know, a lot of the kids wanna move back, but they've got a young family, they're both working, they can't afford prices for houses, and that's.
Let me, uh.
And that's New Hampshire, really, not that. So, you said.
Southern half, at least, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, southern half.
The, uh, we, one thing we've talked about is increasing the size of the ADU. Uh, and possibly making the ADU an allowed use in, uh, in perhaps residential zone or something.
What do you think in size wise, Greg, for the ADU?
Uh, we haven't settled on a number, the thing that we have been, that we're using, finding as a benchmark is the average size of a residence in New Hampshire is in the eighteen hundred square foot range. Uh, does that mean that, uh, eighteen, I'm not saying that should be the number, but, uh, I know, uh, young people, if they're gonna have one kid, you know, starter, you know, there's, there's starter home kind of things. It's, I've always thought about them, or else retirement homes.
Yep.
And then when that happens, I think if it's your own family, then the, the family moves into the big house, and you, the small house, right?
Right. You see more and more of it, yeah, yeah.
They're very traditional, yeah. But, uh, so, and the houses with the, you know, somebody, I think it was, um, Joshua Gordon was saying, I don't know if I wanna see where there, where there's every McMansion, I don't know if I wanna be able to see two McMansions living in that same lot, you know, uh, I think that would be a different look for the town.
Yep.
Right.
So.
But we'll, we'll look around at, at a bunch of different examples specifically on the square footage. I know that when I lived in an eight hundred and forty square foot apartment, we moved when we had our first kid.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
You know, but, um, so you can do it, it's a little tight.
Yeah, but our first kid, we were in less than a thousand square feet for a number of years, but, uh, you know, I don't know whether it's twelve fifty or fifteen hundred, or, but, uh, but I think that's a good, uh, good item for a visioning session to, 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 to feel with, with people, you know.
Yeah, because we don't, you don't want, you don't wanna see the town stay young, middle-aged seniors.
But all.
Absolutely.
Can you have a little late teen, ten years?
Yeah.
You know, and have the families to support that type of thing, which is important.
Yeah, yeah.
Yep.
And you see more of it in town to, really.
One thing I thought about is how the library does a great job for the younger crowd and the old school crowd, and, uh, and does a great job, job with, uh, with the older people, uh, you know, and families, but, uh, that, uh, you know, that, um, late teen, early twenties age, I'm not sure, you can ask the library to provide those.
No, and, and that, that's something that needs to be looked at, too.
Right. Any suggestions?
I don't know.
I know that, uh, just along those lines, so our, our little kid is twenty-two, I saw one of his buddies last night, who I hadn't seen in a long time, looked a lot different, but we were talking about how he could not afford to move back to Concord.
Yep.
Oh, I wouldn't know it.
You know, with, with two incomes, and his girlfriend, and, you know, loves our neighborhood, but it's, you know, it's one of those things, and, um, you know, how to, how to kind of, you know, it's not, it's not just Concord, it's not just Canterbury.
No.
Uh, you know, it's, it's US, it's Canada, it's how to, but how to figure that out, and it's one step, you know, one ADU, maybe a little higher density in a multifamily area, you know, it's, it's only one portion of the whole issue.
So, McStee Stone could, uh, could help with that, you know, maybe some, two or three, three family things.
Maybe interest rates come down?
Yeah.
Let's hope.
All right, thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks, you guys, very much. So, that's all, you guys got a sorry?
Oh, thank you, all right, you're good.
And then it would be.
I'll make a copy of it.
It's gonna be good for the board.
And then, um, the other one, I'll make a copy of it and send it to you.
Yep, you saw that they're looking for your, uh.
I have a hard time.
Yep, yep, yep.
Yeah, I think that's just my opinion.
Thanks.
And I've seen that.
We're talking to Consolidated.
Yeah, I mean, it's, 'cause right now it could be, it could be families and then.
I'll, I'll send me that one, that link on, on the first. Yeah. Good night, guys, thank you.
See ya. Did you read the minutes? Did you read the minutes?
I did read the minutes. Twelve minutes, five seconds.
All right, Ken.
Okay, um. The facilities use, uh, policy, it was, it's one of the things that's kind of been on the back burner for a while. Uh, we had, we've been renting the, the town hall out for various activities, and one of the things that, um, our property liability carrier has suggested was some kind of policy on that. So, I drafted that policy based on some recommendations from them, and, uh, use, actually used the Shaker Regional School District Facilities Use Policy as a, as a format. It talks about liability, uh, things like that. Uh, the one thing that obviously is different from the school, the school prohibits any, any alcohol, uh, use at all on their property. Uh, however, we have rented out the, the, uh, town hall to, um, wedding receptions and things like that, where, uh, they're probably gonna be serving alcohol, and after talking with Primex, they suggested the language I put in there, uh, where, where they, they, uh, highly recommend either a caterer or a, a, a professional bartender to serve, serve any kind of alcohol. The, the big thing is the training, where they have to go through some kind of training for that.
Yep.
Um, and it lets them recognize when, when to, uh, stop serving alcohol to people, so. So, it's one of those, if we would have this policy, we would send a copy of it, have a copy of it, uh, with whoever rents it or uses any of the facility in it, and, and we, we let all the. or uses any of the facility and, and, and we, we let organizations use the facility for no, no charge and we would still have them sign up the policy. You know, it's just a, just a good, uh, procedure to follow.
Ken, in, in terms of like town hall as an example, if we're gonna charge somebody, do we have a standard?
Yeah, fee, yes, yeah, um.
It's a seventy-five dollar fee with a hundred dollar deposit.
Okay, yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay.
And the policy spells out that they can't do anything to the building, things like that. You know, I mean, if they're gonna hang balloons or something, that's one thing, but, but they, they can't alter the building really at all.
Yep. And typically are we charging, for instance, you mentioned wedding reception?
Yep.
Okay. Events like that.
Yeah, private, private functions like that we typically charge for.
Yep.
Uh, and again, depends on, on what the function is. We've done, we've done some, uh, celebration of life functions there where we have a charge, things like that. But, but for functions similar to a, a reception or, or if they're gonna be, uh, we have, have a group there that sells things.
Yep.
And if they're gonna be making money, then, then that's part of the thing where we would charge for.
Yeah, certainly makes sense.
You know, all the community events are, are free, usually free of charge, yeah.
Yeah.
Are we gonna have something in here about cleanup or is that?
Um, we, we, we have a key loan slip that we send out also when we loan the key out, cause obviously we have to get a key to get them in. And at that time when we loan the key out, we tell them that they're typically responsible for pickup. Uh, again, depending on, on who it is or what the function is, that, that may be waived, so.
Seems like a reasonable thing to me.
Yeah, it's, 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 it's really good.
And again, it's, it's a recommendation from our insurance carrier that we have this.
Yeah.
So this applies to every town building and?
Correct, yeah, yeah, every town building. Yeah, if we were to, someone wanted to use this, you know, whatever. Again, it's not for town function, but it's for private functions.
Yeah.
If there's a, if there's a private entity that wants to use one of the town buildings, whether it's this building, the town hall, and this is a safety complex, something like that, then kind of we can have, have a signature in there.
Yep.
Do we need to do anything or just?
No, just make a motion to, that if there's any edits you want, but if not, then make a motion to accept it and we'll put it in as a policy.
I make a, uh, a motion that we, uh, adopt the facilities use policy as, uh, outlining, uh, tonight and have it start from the state.
Yep.
Second.
I'm in favor.
Uh, next thing on my agenda is, uh, we had a, uh, company commit to look at security cameras for the, um, town office.
Did you see what they did?
Yes. Yeah. Um, so basically we get a thirty day free trial on these cameras, but there is a, a cost to install them because we have to run some cable. It was, uh, it was intended to put security cameras in the town office when we rebuilt it several years ago. Unfortunately, at the time, because it's in the historic district, we had applied for a grant. Because it's in the historic district, required, uh, a huge state historical award. And by the time we got that back, uh, it was, the construction had moved forward and it was really too late to put that into the cost of the building. And we'd had a few cost overruns as it was anyway, so we decided to hold off. This system that, that, uh, is being proposed is, uh, where they only have to run some cat five cable from our IT closet, uh, because it's all trusting, you're in the attic, it's easy to do. The cameras don't require a DVR, everything's, uh, recorded in the unit itself and it's a thirty day storage in the cloud, the iCloud. So, um, the, the cost, we had them come out, we looked at the building and said, okay, this is what, they asked what we were looking at and then made some suggestions. We're looking at probably either five or six cameras, which was give us, uh, in the lobby, the side parking lot, the front parking lot, and the exterior of the building. The cameras are very, uh, high tech. They, they're, uh, the, the sales rep showed me video from some of the cameras, live video, uh, where you can zoom in. It's pretty amazing. I know on, sometimes when you see the, the video of bags, if they get robbed or something, the pictures are grainy and, well, this is like, this is unbelievable. It's all, all digital and, uh, it's, uh, it's, it's, uh, very amazing how, how, what the quality of the video is. They can al- also be programmed to recognize a vehicle of a certain color. So, you know, with alarm, uh, if, if there's, you know, someone that, that we know drives a specific color of a vehicle and we're concerned that with that person entering the town office, what a color, when a vehicle of that color comes in and is recognized by the camera, it will alert us that a, a blue vehicle and it, and it would, you know, Ford horse in hand or a pickup truck or whatever, uh, and it would alert the staff that, that that just saw a, a vehicle and we could look at the camera and, and see if that's something where we need to be concerned with. It also does facial recognition, um, similar to that, where there's a, a specific profile that we could put in, you know, or there's a picture or something like that that we could put in and could warn the staff if we had a, had an individual that we knew may be, uh, a problem and, and that would, that would prevent that from, from happening, so. The cost of the system, as it stands now for five cameras with a five year, uh, license, the license has to renew it every, every, every year, is, is between fifty-five hundred and six thousand dollars. The free trial is a thirty day trial. Uh, this company has worked with other municipalities where they would say, okay, we'll install your camera, you pay us half now and then half in a year from now or, or whatever, they'll set up a payment, payment is awesome. Uh, but the cost is, uh, for, for the initial wiring of the two cameras for the free trial is nine hundred and twenty-four dollars. So I am asking if, if that's possible. Uh, we have that money in our, in our municipal, uh, building, in the, uh, in the, the Samley Building Maintenance Fund, so it'll be right on their operating line. And then if we decide it after thirty days to move forward, then we would look at, uh, some other funding methods to see, to see what we can find.
So the five thousand is for five years or five thousand?
Five years.
Five, yeah.
It's five hundred dollars a year and then the camera fees are, are, are on top of that, so.
So, um, what does it do? Walk on the web and you?
Yep, it's, it's access, it's accessible by any, uh, web browser, uh, multiple viewers. One of the things, uh, that we talked about was that, that, uh, at, at this point right now, the, uh, the administrative assistant at the police department has a second monitor where she can view the security cameras up there real time, all the time, they're on, they're on that screen. She could add these, add one camera, two cameras, three cameras to that screen as it is now. They also have the ability to, uh, uh, the company that I'm talking to, this, uh, which does the installation, is a, is a, uh, one company covers everything type company. They do everything from phones to IT services, to security services, alarms, security cameras, everything. So in the future, we may look at them as a potential vendor for moving some other, other options. I know a couple of years ago, we had looked at, we have one computer server down at the town office that serves the whole town office. Police department has a server up there that serves their, their computers, their multiple computers. We had looked at, uh, having one server for both buildings, which was gonna, uh, require the installation of, of a dock fiber line at a, at a pretty high cost. With the change of technology, uh, the prices have come down. I talked to this Howard Systems about that and they have the ability to, to maybe work with us or, or GMAF too. At a little, much lower cost, so. And maybe through a web browser instead of trying to do a, uh, secure line, so.
So the information is, is on the camera itself?
Information is recorded on the cameras themselves, on the individual cameras and then it's accessible by, it's recorded and then we access it through the cloud.
So every, every day?
Every thirty days or every, it, it, it has a thirty day storage, uh.
Which you can increase if you want to pay more.
But, but it comes with a, the contract comes with a thirty day storage.
So every day you're gonna wipe something out?
Every day you're gonna wipe out the previous one day, thirty days ahead of that, yeah.
And this is secure as far as?
It is secure, it's a, it's a multi-factor authentication, uh, browser, so you have to have, uh, usually you, you get an authentication app on your phone. So when you go to log in, log in with a password or a passphrase and then it gives you an authentication number query. And you have to go to the authenticator code on your phone and it gives you a number or a pass, code, passphrase. You enter that and then you can access it.
So how many can people have access to this?
Well, that depends on how many you want. You would, you could have multiple viewers, uh, but you, you want, obviously want to limit how many people have access.
Yeah.
Yeah. Cause you don't want somebody erasing something that's on there, so.
Well, it's kind of a privacy issue too, as far as?
Yeah, yeah, it is, it is, and it's something that is, you know, obviously, uh, you cannot, the state of New Hampshire does not allow license plate readers, uh, but, but this system identifies, again, like I said, maybe a specific vehicle make, uh, or a color and a sedan or something like that, you know, it identifies that, so.
This is anticipating somebody getting something troubling?
Yeah, and, and again, certainly, you know, knock on wood, we have been having problems. We had one issue a few years ago, a resident town, uh, and, uh, that resident was told that they couldn't enter the town office without a police escort because of, uh, some threats that were involved. We had no way of enforcing that other than if they called the police station ahead of time to say, yeah, I gotta register my car and they would beat them up in the parking lot. This would give us an opportunity of saying, well, if we have a particular individual that is a potential problem, then we could set up an alarm on that and, and then they'd warn us, so.
It, it's good protection for the employees, cause they're, they're out there.
Yeah, I, you know, again, we, we have been very fortunate in this town, but certainly happens in, in every, every small town all over the country that, that you read about a problem here or there. I mean, obviously, you know, the big one in this state was the guy north in Colebrook that, uh, caused all those problems up there. We had one on the, uh, on the western part of the state, there was a problem at a town clerk's office, uh, it resulted in fatalities, so, it's just one of those things. We don't have bulletproof glass, we don't have secure areas where our, our staff is, but this may, you know, offer us some, some level of, another level of protection.
Yeah, and until you're in a situation like that.
Yeah, we don't, we don't wanna, uh, you know, wait till something happens and then, particularly if there's an opportunity to, to be, use a little prevention.
Yeah.
So is this gonna add to your workload or who's gonna be?
No, it would, I mean, you know, the setup would, but, but unless there's a, a need for viewing the film or viewing the recordings, then not particularly. If, if, uh, especially if we have the ability for the, the police, uh, administrative assistant to watch live time, and, and again, we can set up alerts, uh, but, but again, unless we have an event that would trigger us to try and recover or recapture some video or whatever, then, then no, it's a set in, forget it type thing and that's pretty much it.
But if you, if you're trying to go after a car or something that you wanna watch for, is that gonna be you that does that or?
Uh, it would, depends on what the event was and what level of, uh, investigation we needed. It may be something I may ask the police department to investigate. Uh, if it's, if it's something, you know, criminal, then we may want the police department to investigate it. That would, that would go right to them. My guess is that we would probably have, you know, I would have access to it and the police chief and the administrative assistant up there would have access to it. And if one of you guys wanted access to it, that would be, you know, but I think that would, we'd want to limit the.
Yeah, it would, yeah.
It sounds good to me.
Yeah, it's really a good idea.
Yeah, just one question on, can the cameras see in the dark?
Yes.
Infrared or?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Yep, yeah, and obviously the, at the, they have interior cameras and exterior cameras. The exterior cameras have infrared and, and, and the light quality or connectivity. The, one of the advantages is, is no DVR, so so, any software, with the license comes software upgrades, so we're not having to buy a new DVR in four or five years or upgrade the software in four or five years, all that.